All the meeting for the planning commission to order, please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, as we approach your throne tonight, we're so thankful that we can, thankful that you as a God answer our prayers. I do pray tonight, Lord, to be in this meeting tonight, Lord, be the leech member, Lord, give them wisdom as they discuss the affairs of our city. Do pray for our police that are out patrolling right now, to build a hedge around them, protect them, get them home safely. Also pray for our fire department, our firemen as well, thank you for their service. Do pray tonight, Lord, that you be in this meeting and, Lord, to speak to our hearts, Lord, encourage us. Father, we just prayed you'd give them wisdom, we thank you for their services well. We do ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We might want to check that mic on the podium, it didn't sound like I was hearing it.
It's on, but I think it's just low.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll check the volume on it.
Okay, roll call?
Connor?
Here.
Caddish?
Here.
Moka?
Here.
Sanchez Garcia?
Here.
Porward?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Subsequent need items, do we have any subsequent need items?
We don't have any.
Thank you. Okay, I'll be looking for approval of the agenda as posted or amended.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Connor?
Oh.
Ace? Oh, Ca- I'm sorry, Caddish?
Yes.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Moka?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
And Bogward?
Yes.
Thank you, motion is passed.
I'll ask you bear with us tonight, Scott is new in this and just training, getting the hang of it, so. We have no petitions in communications, correct? So we will move to the public hearing portion. Item number one, public hearing, to recommend that the city council of the city of Atwater adopt an initial study and mitigated negative declaration in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, for the Osborne Park Expansion Project, and approve general plan amendment number two-five dash zero-one dash zero-two-zero-zero, and zone change number two-five dash zero-one dash zero-three-zero-zero for the project located at five-oh-one East Bellevue Road, Atwater. APN one-five-six dash zero-six-zero dash zero-zero-nine dash zero-one-one and dash zero-two-five. We'll open the public hearing and we'll turn this over to staff at the moment, Chris is on the phone this evening.
Good evening, could everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great, so this project is an initial study and a mitigated negative declaration, which is a, is an environmental document for the Osborne Park Expansion. It also includes rezone and a general plan language designation update. So the general plan is currently commercial, and the proposal is to update that to park. And the zone is currently general commercial. And the proposal is to update that to general commercial with an open space overlay. A little history on this, I wasn't at the last meeting, but this item did go to a previous zoning commission meeting. The environmental document was not part of the packet, and so we've attached that to the packet now, and everyone should have a copy of that. There was a bit of a presentation by staff at previous meetings, so I'll take any questions if anyone has any, and hear from the public, thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the commission have any questions for Mr. Home?
I do.
Okay.
So, one of the questions that came from the audience at the last meeting regarding this project was about the parking ADA, et cetera, et cetera, for all of this stuff. And so as we, as I browse through the packet here, I noticed that the parking spots are delineated and everything like that, but I don't see any handicap parking pointed out in here. Is that, is that premature for this document, or is that something that still needs to be added?
That's normal, because although the environmental document is before you, the site plan is not, is at a future date, and that site plan will have more details on the exact parking spaces, including ADA parking.
Okay.
As well as the various fields and courts that will be involved in the project. So although there is a conceptual site plan attached to the staff report, that's not what is going to end up being precisely what is developed. We still need to do some more outreach and do the formal design work. This is just the first step in redoing the rezone and the general plan language designation update, as well as the environmental document. So what you're talking about will come in the future.
Very good, thanks for the clarification, appreciate.
Any other questions? Okay, are there any public comments on this particular item? If so, please come to the podium, state your name, and...
Good evening, commission. So in regards to what Mr. Home was just discussing again, my concerns are, obviously, the tentative site plan, even though it's conceptual, I want to make sure that the commission here would consider the fact that we need to actually state in your findings prior to your vote that it does need to be done before it goes to council. That's my opinion of it, whether that happens or not, it's entirely up to you guys. Does the city, another question I had is, does the city own the property that's in question yet? And the other question is, does the city have a signed document from the property owner? Those are steps that, that we developers have to take, and I didn't see any in there. And that's just a simple thing, and just wanted to see if the city had that all wrapped up in a bow for us. And then lastly, nothing big, but it does say that there's some tribal and cultural concerns that the SEQA had found. I didn't know if the city received comments back, if it is a Native American site. I mean, that's something that, if you guys go start digging out there, you start digging a deep storm drain basin, or at some point, it might be something to consider, to make sure all that is in a bow too. Just because if you pull up artifacts, now you have property that's going to probably be taken from you, or have to be mitigated, and, and the tribal organizations are going to have to be in there. It did state there's quite a few in there, I don't know if anybody looked into that, or if, you know, make sure all that's in a bow too. Just some concerns I had.
I'll defer your questions to Mr. Home, if you'd like to answer those.
Sure, I'd be happy to answer those questions. I may need to go back and get a refresher on all of them, because there are a few, but, starting with tribal, there's always going to be a standard practice whenever there's construction work. But if any human remains are found in the course of construction, that construction must stop, and a tribal lands advisor has to come to the site and review things going forward. So that, of course, is going to be part of our standard practice. As far as the site plan, typically, when development happens, it's a whole package, and the reason for that is that if the city is going to go through a zone change for private development, we want to make sure that, that development is fully reviewed and analyzed in order to do any changes. In this case, the city council has already given direction to pursue an expansion for Osborne Park. And although the city doesn't own all the properties in question, the city can make changes throughout, anywhere in the city, as needed, through a general plan update process or a rezone process to meet the needs of what the vision of the council is for that part of the city. Of course, there will not be development of the properties that are not owned by the city until the city gains ownership. And the two properties in question are the ones that end with dash zero-one-one and dash zero-two-fives. Of those properties, one of them, the city is in the process of acquiring, and the other one, the city is still negotiating. So the reason that those were incorporated in this expansion project is that we wanted to be prepared in case the city does acquire those properties, so that we can make a larger expansion area as part of the project. Of course, if the city does not acquire those properties, then we'll have done the fire review, and it done that work, but it, of course, we're not going to go on private property to to make development improvements without, now, first acquiring that property. Answered the questions, but let me know if I missed something.
Go ahead, was there another question?
So in regards to some of those comments, the only other thing that I do have, you know, concern over, and again, I'm for the project, for the expansions, great for community, not an issue. I just want to make sure everything's wrapped up in a bow nice and tight, so there's no issues long term. The property on the north is in between, the potential access would be, apparently, there's like a new easement through there between a building in between Starbucks and existing building that's unfinished, and an existing building. I don't know if that property's going to end up having access from that side, if it is, that's something to consider. If the only access is going to become from Osborne Park, I didn't see anything on the site plan or in the discussions about fires concerns, whether or not they can make a loop through there, or do they need an access out? That wasn't addressed. Again, just things that I looked at, just want to make sure that everybody's aware, are we going to go through the car wash and have access to that property from the car wash, since the car wash is going to be selling, or the city's going to be acquiring it from the national company? Is that going to be cut off, so that there's no more access from there, or is that going to be like an emergency easement? I didn't see that in there. Little things like that, that didn't seem addressed, I know the whole project's not complete yet, but if that would have been addressed thus far, it would have been a couple more things that can be wrapped up before it goes to council.
Thank you. Mr. Home, do you know if there's going to be any further community input as development of the project goes along and the plans go along?
I heard Brad's question, but I didn't quite hear, was that Don?
Yes, I was just asking if you knew if there was going to be any more community input on this project that's going to be, you know, through meetings or something, as the planning stage starts planning to park out?
Yes, I think I understand the question. So there will be further outreach in the community to gather feedback and formalize the design. But I do know that there will be two access points into Osborne Park when this expansion project is, comes to fruition. However, the second access point will not be through Mr. Carwash's property. It's further to the, further to the east. It's, I believe it's immediately west of the existing oil fields. And that's where the second point of access will be. Also, I'd like to indicate that this project's been reviewed by all relevant departments, including fire.
I'm not sure that we got the, the last bit of that.
The, the project has been reviewed by all departments, including fire.
Okay.
And they've approved, yes.
Okay.
And city manager, if I may interject, that there is a survey that's going out that was vetted by Public Works with the project, that'll be going out next week. For the public.
Good.
Thank you.
A survey for the public?
Is this appropriate, can I ask a follow-up question too, or is my time passed? Go ahead.
That's up to the chair.
When I bring it back.
Okay.
See any more input, public input, then I will close the public comment portion of this and bring it back to the board, now you can...
I can ask, okay. So to Mr. Kessler's point, on the map, you know, look at the plots and all of that, the property that is where the swimming pool is and/or the other field behind there where, you know, that butts up against Food for Less, is that already city-owned property, or? And should that be included in the site plan if it, if it in fact is city property? But I'm just thinking about the fire, you know, egress, et cetera, et cetera, in that swimming pool area there. I don't know if that question makes any sense to you. The property to the west of this property, does that belong to the city? Chris?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
APN one-five-six dash zero-six-zero dash zero-zero-nine is, sorry, it's kind of hard for me to look at the map here. Zero-zero-eight is owned by the city. Zero-two-five is in the process of being acquired by the city. And zero-one-one is still under negotiations.
And then what about the property next to zero-one-one, the, the empty field and then just kind of southwest of there where the swimming pool is?
Right.
Zero-zero-nine is, I believe that's owned by the city.
No, the other direction, the other direction.
Unmarked.
The unmarked, they're, they're between Food for Less.
To the west, that, that is owned by the city, the one that's, that doesn't have a number on it?
Yes.
That's owned by the city, yeah.
There's a swimming pool on the little cutout one there, next to the Food for Less, it would be behind the KW Real Estate there, or whatever it is, Williams. And the Pizza Guys, or whatever. There was that piece of property that has the old city swimming pool on it, I think that's correct, right?
Yes.
Bellevue Swimming Pool, yeah. Is that city property?
The one with the swimming pool, yes, I believe it is.
So then that gets to Mr. Kessler's point for fire, rescue, et cetera, et cetera, access, egress. Would it be prudent to include that in this?
Zero-zero-nine provides a secondary access point for, for a second, a second fire access point already.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Anybody else?
Then I'll call for a motion, the motion tonight is strictly on the negative declaration for this, the initial study and negative declaration, so motion to make a finding that the action is subject to environmental review pursuant to SEQA, and recommend that the city council of the city of Atwater adopt an initial study and mitigated negative declaration in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, for the Osborne Park Expansion Project, and approve general plan amendment number twenty-five dash zero-one dash zero-two-zero-zero, and zone change number twenty-five dash zero-one dash zero-three-zero-zero for the project located at five-oh-one East Bellevue Road, Atwater. APN one-five-six dash zero-six-zero dash zero-zero-nine dash zero-one-one and dash zero-two-five. I'll make a motion to approve the study as stated.
Second.
Connor?
Yes.
Caddish?
Yes.
Moka?
Yes.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Porward?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Item number two, public hearing to recommend that the city council of the city of Atwater adopt zoning ordinance text amendment number two-five dash one-six dash zero-one zero-zero amending chapter seventeen point six, low-density residential districts of the Atwater Municipal Code, to adjust the setbacks for carports in section seventeen point one-six point zero-eight-zero of this chapter. I'll open the public hearing, Mr. Home?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me still?
He asked if you could hear him.
Pardon?
He asked if you could still hear him, yes.
Yes, yes, we still can.
Okay, thank you. So this is an item that was previously discussed by the planning commission. Unfortunately, I wasn't at that meeting. However, picking up where we left off, this particular zoning ordinance text amendment would allow carports to have a zero front yard setback. There are a lot of carports throughout the city that would be beneficially affected by this ordinance update. And it's a fairly simple update. And that's basically it, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions from the commission?
Point of clarification there, I, I do have a question on this, you said zero setback on a parking, on a canopy? I thought there was a five-foot setback from property and/or twenty-five foot from center of the street. Or street.
I can answer that question if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So, property lines are typically along the back of sidewalk. So if you have a carport that's located on a paved driveway, that carport could be, basically, it wouldn't be able to go across the sidewalk, it could be next to the sidewalk. And that's where a lot of carports are typically located.
Thank you. I struggle with that, so I'm going to vote no on that, but that's just my opinion.
I have a question that, would this impact any existing carports? In any way?
Yes. Yes.
In what way would they be impacted? Like, would they have to be taken down, and for whatever reason that it doesn't comply with this, or how would that work?
Well, currently, the setback is depending on the zone, but in many cases, it's, I believe, twenty feet, which means, in many cases, carports are out of compliance currently, and this would put them into compliance in many cases.
The event that the carport is a hazard, like in terms of, you know, pulling out or pulling in, in certain cases, if the carport's too thick, or it has covers, how would we tackle that?
All I can say is, this item's been reviewed by our fire personnel, and it's been vetted by them.
So, I have a question too, previous to this and last discussion, I recall that there was a five-foot setback from the property line, is that still existing too? Or is that, you know, going to zero also? Which would put it right, basically, on your property line with your neighbor.
This proposal would be for a zero-foot front yard setback for carports only.
Okay, and what would, what would the, the side setback be, would that be the five foot?
There would be no change to the side yard setback. So in many cases, they would be, we'd have to look at the zoning, but I think they would be around five feet.
I have a couple questions. So firstly, what would getting into compliance look like for those that need to do that? And then secondly, I was interested in knowing your concerns about that, if you're willing to share a little bit more, you said...
On, on the setback, my concern from the sidewalk is just safety and security. Frankly, I, from, on a person, from a personal standpoint, I, I have real heartburn over these things, but, but I guess they are, can be made compliant, but I, I think they need to have some, some sort of setback. They shouldn't be able to come right up to the sidewalk. Or the street if there's no sidewalk.
Okay.
That's just my opinion.
My question to that would be, what if the, like, whatever the property line is, is minimal? And so they don't have enough space to do the five-foot setback, right, so...
If there's, if there's, you know, like in a cul-de-sac, as an example maybe, where you have, you know, a very limited, you know, driveway. Yeah, I struggle with that, I, I don't, I don't care for that, I, I think it's, it's an eyesore, I think it's a safety concern. Yeah. I'm going to vote no on this, but just because of that.
So going back, just in terms of compliance, what would that look like for a resident, what do they have to do? What's the time look like, those kinds of things?
Depending on the size of the carport, it may be exempt from needing a, a building permit. There's a certain threshold for the square footage. If it's a certain size, then they would need to get a building permit to come into compliance. And I'll just point out that there are a lot of front yard fences that are built right up against the sidewalk. So this would be similar to that, where there's, you know, a minor structure that's against the sidewalk.
I have a, I have a neighbor with a fence right at the sidewalk, so. So if there's no other questions from the commission, I'll open this to the public. Anybody would like to speak to this particular item?
So again, this, this thing doesn't really affect me any. Some concerns I have is, this is only residential. There was a business on Atwater Boulevard, they do tenting, and they also do car audio, and they originally applied for, they put one of these up, they were denied. Quite, quite a few years ago, they poured concrete, they were trying to do everything the right way, and now we're allowing this in the residential district, so it's kind of, you know, again, it's talking out of both sides of the, of the mouth there. But aside from that, the other concern that has been brought up is, behind the sidewalk, there's a ten-foot PUE. And there's utilities, you got PG&E, Comcast, Gas, City Utilities. A lot of these are already closer, like Mr. Home said, they are closer to, to the sidewalk, if not, some on the sidewalk. Again, in the development world, we have all these other things to follow. I don't want homeowners to have to rebuild and take down everything that's already existing, that's going to create an issue for the city. Something to consider from that perspective. If you're going to do it, and your grandfather are a man, then, you know, people are going to try and get them done quick, before you start creating... I mean, somebody's have to go door-to-door, this is hot mess all the way around the board, in my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the board. Anyone else have take on this, or?
I, I think it's important that we keep, keep a, keep in mind the scope of what we're voting on, right? We're not voting on whether or not we're going to go back and start enforcing code on carports, right? We're simply just giving the citizens of Atwater, the residents of Atwater, more room to decide where to put a carport, if they decide to follow the law, and/or if they decide to just put up a carport without a permit, right? So all we're simply saying here with this, with this, is that if they want to follow the law, if they want... the law, if they want to file a permit, it gives them a little bit more wiggle room in their front yard to properly put, place a carport.
Correct. It gives them a legal aspect for actually being able to do that.
Correct. We're not, this has nothing to do with the people that are out of compliance, or the people that will be out of compliance in the future. This is simply a, if they're gonna do it per the scope of the law and get a permit, it just gives them more room within the bounds of their property to exercise that right.
Any other comments? If there's no other comments, then I'll call for a motion to, oops, sorry, wrong page. There is not the motion on here.
It's on the other page?
No. There's a motion for one and three. Okay. To make a finding that the zoning ordinance text amendment is categorically exempt under California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, guideline section one-five-zero-six-one B3, and adopt resolution number zero-two-seven-five dash two-five, recommending city council to adopt a zoning ordinance text amendment, amending chapter seventeen point six, low-density residential districts of the Atwater municipal code, to adjust the setbacks for carports in section seventeen point one-six point zero-eight-zero of this chapter.
I would like to make the motion to approve.
Second.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Caddish?
No.
Connor?
Yes.
Moka?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number three, public hearing to consider adopting a resolution recommending city council adopt zoning ordinance text amendment number two-five dash one-seven dash zero-one-zero-zero, amending chapter seventeen point sixteen, low-density residential districts of the Atwater municipal code, to adjust the minimum lot depth in section seventeen point one-six point zero-five-zero of this chapter, and add definitions for knuckle lots and cul-de-sac lots in chapter seventeen point zero-six. I'll open the public comment period. Mr. Home?
Yes, thank you. This item is brought to the commission because there's a particular subdivision that, as the staff has reviewed their parcel map, we've noticed that there are turns in the road, and there are cul-de-sac lots. The turns in the road kind of flare out, and when it flares out, it, ours, the road carves a bit of the front of some of the lots. And those lots are a little bit less deep than the standard lots down the street. These lots that have been carved out are called knuckle lots, because the street forms a knuckle. Currently, we do not have a definition in our municipal code for cul-de-sac lots or knuckle lots. However, looking throughout the city, we've noticed that there are a lot of subdivisions throughout the city that were built, and when we measure the depth of those lots, of the knuckle lots and the, and the cul-de-sac lots that exist today, they are not a hundred feet deep, like the regular neighboring lots throughout the subdivisions. So although this may have been some kind of common practice for the city to approve, this zoning ordinance text amendment codifies and corrects and clarifies this situation so that moving forward, we have a better foundation to stand on and in making decisions on parcel map. The, the difference is that knuckle lots would be allowed to have, to be ten feet shallower than a regular standard lot, and cul-de-sac lots would be allowed to be twenty feet shallower than a regular lot. So for instance, in most low-density residential zones, the minimum lot depth for a regular lot is one hundred feet. But for a knuckle lot, it would be ninety feet, and for a cul-de-sac lot, it would be eighty feet minimum. Of course, this does not affect the minimum lot size, those remain the same. So if we're talking about a zone that requires residential lots to be at least seven thousand square feet, the knuckle lots would still have to be seven thousand square feet. So it's not like you're squeezing in smaller lots, but rather, we're recognizing the real, you know, subdivision design work that goes into this, and, and clarifying that we will allow this, as we have in the past, but now we're recognizing it more clearly. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I think it would've helped to kind of see that project that Chris referred to, or, so we could exactly see what we're dealing with, or what we're talking about. But I do have a few questions about this that I could ask after that.
I believe the information in the packet, if you could put it up on the...
If we could look at the specific project that this... So the project is University Park. However, that project is not before the planning commission. And also, the planning commission's not approving that project. It's more reviewing and considering, recommending to the city council whether or not to add these clarifications in the municipal code, so that in the future, not only this project, but also all other projects would fall under the same clear and understandable...
Uh, 'cause a few issues that I had with this was that I felt like, if a developer comes to the city with a project, now they have to follow kind of guidelines, it limits their flexibility, and I feel like it also discourages creative design. So say if a lot was specific and whatever reason, then now they have to follow these, these, you know, these, what, what, what we've told them, hey, they have to follow, so they have to be ninety feet, or eighty feet, or a hundred and ten feet, or whatever it may be. So I feel like that discourages creative design, especially since not all lots are the same. And it might affect small parcel owners. So those are the few issues that I've had with, with this.
Chair, if I may? Um, so currently, without having the clear definitions for knuckle lots and cul-de-sac lots that this proposal is about, all lots, including cul-de-sac lots, must have a minimum depth of a hundred feet. And so right now, really, it, it, we currently have some rules that are, could be seen as onerous in their application. And the idea with this change is to allow more creativity and flexibility for subdivision designers.
In what way would it allow more creativity?
Because for instance, right now, if you wanna have a knuckle lot, they have to have their feet deep. And therefore, the lots next to them would have to be even deeper than that. So you'd be constrained to having all the lots, the regular lots down the street, closer to about a hundred and ten feet of depth, which means you, you wouldn't truly be able to maximize the efficient design of the subdivision, because the rules that are currently in place are, are overly restrictive.
So Mr. Home, if I understand the, the gist of this, what this does is actually create an opportunity in the development portion of this, to allow for knuckle lots and cul-de-sac lots, that would be a different dimension or different size than what standard is, is required right now. So it just identifies those particular variables and allows for those. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, mostly correct. They would be allowed to be different in dimensions, specifically their depth. However, the, the, the minimum, or, the minimum lot size is not changing, so if it's in a subdivision with a zone that requires seven thousand square foot lots, they'll still have to have all the lots be at least seven thousand square feet. What this means is that if you have a, a knuckle lot, it's going to be a little bit wider if it's, if it's not as deep, to make up for that difference.
Okay.
Wouldn't it make sense to consider a design-based flexibility clause on here? 'Cause I would say that not, again, all, not all parcels are the same, so you want, say, a parcel A could comply with this, great. But parcel B may have some challenge to it, where you may need to be flexible, and I, I, I'm not sure if I'm entirely understanding that.
Um, I guess, I'm s- sorry, I'm not in person there, I might be able to draw something, but the essence of this is that, right now, cul-de-sac lots are required to be a hundred feet deep, as well as knuckle lots. There's no distinction in the code. So without going through this change, it really throws, it throws a wrench into this proposed subdivision that will come back to the city for review in the future for approval. So what I'm trying to do here is, I'm, I'm trying to be, you know, development-friendly, so that they can produce the, the subdivision that they've designed.
Anything else, Mr. Moka? Anyone else? Then I'll open this to the public. Anybody have any comments that they would like to mention on this particular item? If not, I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the board. So we're looking to make a finding that the zoning ordinance text amendment is categorically exempt under California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, guideline section one-five-zero-six-one B3, and adopt resolution number zero-two-seven-six dash two-five, recommending city council to adopt a zoning ordinance text amendment, amending chapter seventeen point six, low-density residential districts of the Atwater municipal code, to adjust the minimum lot depth in section seventeen point one-six point zero-five-zero of this chapter, and add definitions for knuckle lots and cul-de-sac lots in the chapter seventeen point zero-six.
I make a motion to approve as stated.
I'll second that.
Caddish?
Yes.
Moka?
No.
Sanchez Garcia?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Borward?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto reports and presentation from staff. Mr. Home, do you have anything that you would like to speak to?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Home.
Okay. We'll move to your comments from the public. As a notice to the public, at this time, any person may comment on any item which is not on the agenda. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Action will not be taken on any item that is not on the agenda. If it requires action, it'll be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes.
Logan, just wanted to let all of you know here, that I went to council, and I let everybody know that Atwater Feed is also now gonna be, they're gonna be called Atwater Feed and Supply, and we are getting a True Value, and it's gonna be built within their store. It's a big deal for our town.
Hey.
It's been about fifteen, twenty years since we have a hardware store. We had a True Value when it was Kenny's. We also had Pass Stories, which was an Ace Hardware, but those have since gone, and so it's nice to finally get it back. And on behalf of the family, I'm just letting everybody in the public know that it's coming, and we're really looking forward to get our permits and get this thing rolling. Haven't quite got there yet, but we're looking forward to it, and we think it's gonna be a great feature rebuilding on the corridor of Atwater, and we're looking forward to it. Just wanted to let you know.
Wonderful, thank you. Having a hardware store here will be a huge benefit. Okay, commissioner matters. We'll start down at my right, Mr. Moka?
Uh, I kind of told everybody for the meeting, but we have a DiWali night on the twenty-third, which is next Thursday. It is hosted by the Merced County Indian Chamber of Commerce. I highly encourage everyone to bring, everyone to come out there, bring the families. It's gonna be a great event, it's free for everybody, there's gonna be a lot of vendors, performances, so really hope everybody can make it out there.
I would, I would hope to see DiWali night in Atwater some year, too.
Very soon, hopefully we can work on that, yeah.
Mr. Connor?
I got, I got nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Caddish?
Not sure if this is appropriate at this point, but just wanted to talk about a, a want, a need. Thinking, I, I, at the Dutch Bros Coffee across the street here, the driveway that leaves, the Egress driveway that leaves the west side of that whole parking lot, right, which is right where cars come out of the coffee shop there, when they make a right turn, it used to be a right turn only there onto Bellevue. We have so many cars now make, wanting to make left turns there, and now you have to sit there and wait for, you know, the traffic lights to change, more traffic lights to change, and you have cars coming, and, and you get quite a backlog of, of vehicles in that driveway there. So I don't know if, I was looking for the packet from when we approved that property, but I don't, I, I know that was a topic of conversation at that time, but I'd, I'd like to see a right turn only sign for onto Bellevue that way, and if cars from the coffee shop wanna make a left turn there, they need to go to the stoplight. Just a thought.
Sanchez Garcia?
Just wanted...
I think I heard that, and I, I'm looking to Scott and/or Jamel to take down a note so that we can follow up with that.
Thank you.
Just wanted to comment, thank you Brad for sharing about Atwater Feed. I'm excited to hear, you know, we've been looking forward to that here in the city, an important business for us. So anyway, just want to comment that I'm excited to hear the direction that's going in, and other than that, no comment.
Great, great. I have no comment tonight, and so with that, we will close our meeting. I have no comment tonight, and so with that, we will close our meeting.